All right, good evening, welcome to the June 9th, 2015, meeting of the Manchester Town Council. Welcome with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, first order of business is approval of the May 12th, 2015 minutes. We have two sets of minutes in here because of the organizational meetings, so we'll start with the regular May meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 12th, 2015.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, any additions or corrections? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, then we have the May 27th reorganizational meeting. In pretty brief minutes, but still have minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 27th, 2015.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, any additions or corrections? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, two treasures items, going back to April, we have the treasure report now for April. So entertain a motion to receive the treasure report from April.
I'll make a motion that we receive the treasure report for April 2015, and the check register for May 2015.
I second the motion.
It's a motion to receive both the April 2015 treasure report and the May check register together. I think we're fine. Any motion, or second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, moving on to the mayor's report, and I welcome Jen Warner, her first term, no relation to me unfortunately.
No.
For me, no. And this is the new board, Dale Wilder was elected council vice president at the May 27th reorganizational meeting. So if something were to happen to me or if I'm out of the meeting, Dale would serve as mayor and run the business meeting. Today we'll also get into the committee reports, so we had some discussion over the last month or so on committee assignments. So tentatively, going in, Councilman Smith will remain as rental housing appeals board and communication, which is the cable franchise agreement. Councilman Warner will take on community improvement projects and educational outreach. Councilman Pacelli will stay with MAMA and also add sustainability task force. Councilman Howell will stay with Parks and Rec. Councilman Wilder will stay within intergovernmental relations, also add planning and zoning, and maintain capital projects. So that's the way we'll proceed for now, if the need arises to add something or adapt as we go, then we'll do that. Last Friday, I attended the Manchester Valley High School senior awards ceremony over at the high school. The town recognized two graduating seniors, one of whom is not here. Brittany Ann Lippi and Natalie Singer were both presented with student recognition awards along with $500 scholarship. They're going to their college for the fall. And then today, I believe, we have our recipient for the Charlotte Bortner Colette Scholarship. So if you'd like to come up and receive your award, we have Noah David Miller, who is, lives in the area on Shafer Mill Road, is homeschooled, had an outstanding application. I was not on the, on the committee this year, but three of these folks were, and reviewed and you were the unanimous choice to receive the Charlotte Colette Scholarship, which comes along with a $1,000 scholarship, and you are attending University of Maryland College Park this fall.
Yes, sir.
So congratulations.
You deserve it.
Do I say a few words?
Well, I really appreciate the scholarship. It was a very nice situation I had, being able to attend the University of Maryland, and I'll be very proud to attend one of the university's assault. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Don't be startled by the dog, it's back here. Not many people know that dog. One additional thing, the chief of police is not... Kelly, you want this too?
Yeah, I'll pick that.
Chief Hess is not able to be here tonight. It's the town administrator, Steve Miller, will be writing the police report, but I did want to make note of one other item. Manchester Patrolman First Class Ron Gardner is nominated for the 2014 Carroll County, Carroll County Community College Officer of the Year. So Chief Hess and Steve Miller attended the presentation recently, and then we have a letter here. So it's PFC Ron Gardner, has been a member of the Carroll County Law Enforcement for 30 years. Ron began his career with the Westminster Police Department in July 1985. After retiring from the Westminster Police Department in 2011, Ron continued his law enforcement career, joining Manchester Police Department in May of 2011. "Today, Ron is still very engaged, a loyal dedicated officer, serving citizens of our great county. Although Ron has 30 years in policing, he strives daily to better himself as one of our county's finest. Ron is dedicated to our collective mission of not only in Carroll County combating our daunting challenges of heroin addiction, he also plays a part as an officer and a detective working in complete collaboration to dismantle the drug organizations polluting our county. Ron is also very dedicated to serving our citizens who face mental health issues. When I asked for a volunteer to step up and attend training to join the county's first crisis intervention team, Ron Gardner was the first person, he did it without hesitation. Ron truly cares about our community and his citizens. Since I became chief of police," and again I'm reading for Chief Hess, "in Manchester 2013, Ron's been very supportive in my efforts to make Manchester the safest town in the county. He's had a banner 2014 and into 2015 identifying and arresting theft repeat offenders, toppling a counterfeit money operation, and taking down a small but nuisance drug operation. The Manchester Police Department operates as a team to get this done, and PFC Ron Gardner is a team player and a team leader. PFC Gardner has also worked effortlessly to include in the coming, to include coming on his days off to assist families with dealing with crisis mental health issues, and to bond and support the families and the autism, autism community. He has received many thank you notes and emails from the community. Ron really cares, wearing the uniform with pride, and is proud to serve. I wish to take this opportunity to thank PFC Ron Gardner for a job well done regarding the work performed, performed by him during his 30-year law enforcement career, serving Carroll County and Manchester. His efforts are deserving of recognition for an outstanding job. Respectfully submitted, John Hess, Chief of Police, Manchester." So congratulations, Ron, and thank you for your continued work. That's all I have, so I'll pass it over to the town administrator.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council members of the community. We'll go ahead and start with the May 2015 administrative report. There's no change in the SHA projects, but Chief Hess and I will be meeting with SHA on June 17th to discuss the Route 27 Westminster Street intersection and the approach lane from Route 27 on to Route 30. There's no change in the Sheets project, the town hall police station, bids for construction have been advertised. We did have a pre-bid meeting today, and we had seven general contractors, and then there was four subcontractors here for that meeting, and the bid opening is scheduled for June 30th here at town hall at 10:00 a.m. You have a copy of the code enforcement status report in front of you, some miscellaneous items. We were notified by Maryland Municipal League that Manchester has been awarded the Banner City Town Distinction. I want to thank Ms. Tammy Black for all the hard work she did on this. This will definitely open up some doors for the town in regards to grants that we can receive. The ADA ramp design for this building is complete, and construction bids will go out sometime in July. Also, we're starting to work on the specifications for the ADA sidewalk project from Main Street to Church Street and possibly beyond to Manchester Elementary School. Also tonight, we have the introduction of the renewal of the floodplain resolution ordinance, which is actually something that we have to do in regards to the new FEMA regulations. So it's actually a housekeeping issue. Moving right along, you have in front of you the May 2015 public works report. You also have the water and wastewater status report for May of 2015. Under wastewater, the wastewater treatment plant has seen a decrease in the INI, the inflow and infiltration coming into the plant, especially during one heavy rainfall that we had in May. You may recall, this is the work that's been done during the pipe, pipe relining project that we did. Actually, a very conservative figure that we're seeing right now is we're reducing our flow at least by 30,000 and possibly more per day. We want to get a couple more months of flow data under our belt, and we'll get a better handle on that. Also, something that's not on your report, we have an action item tonight, and that is bid results for a 40 horsepower submersible pump, and that would be for out at our spray irrigation facility. Under stormwater, on May 26th, county staff and I met with Mr. Lampard, and this was in regards to gaining permission to do some preliminary studies of the Whispering Valley Stormwater Management Facility A, which is, Facility A is at the intersection of Route 30 and Michelle Road. This is in preparation of the future retrofit for this facility. On May 27th, Mr. Donald Knott and I attended a tour sponsored by Carroll County Bureau of Resource Management. We went to seven different locations throughout the county on some ongoing and proposed stormwater mitigation projects, and we were pretty impressed with a lot of them that's taking place right now throughout the county. The Route 27 skate park stormwater management facility update on that, our preliminary plans have been reviewed, and the final plans are being completed as we speak. Another action item that you have in front of you tonight is the repair of 16 storm drain inlet repair, uh, bids. You'll see that in front of you a little bit later. Also, something else that's not on your report that happened late, Eagle Scout Reed Ladder will be doing the Manchester Farms Storm Drain Stenciling, his Eagle Scout project on July the 11th, Saturday, July the 11th, with a rain date of July the 18th. So what we're going to do to help him, we're going to be supplying some cones and some vests, and also we're going to put it on our website and also cable TV to let the folks know in the Manchester Farms area that the scouts are going to be out there doing that. Under maintenance roads and parks, the street patching and repaving bids were open yesterday. Two bids were received, both bids were rejected because they were over our budget amount. That does create a problem, and something that a lot of municipalities depended on was the highway user fee. Unfortunately, we've been told that it may be coming back slowly over the next four years, but that has a huge impact on small municipalities and their budget, and how it reacts to getting your streets repaved and redone. So just anything you can do to help us as far as politically to get, get those highway user fees back through MML or whatever, it's very, it's needed, the municipalities need that. An update on our inclusive playground, the site preparation will begin over the next several weeks, and the equipment bid specs are out on the street, and they're due back July the 6th. And our folks assisted the nature center in preparing the area for the concrete pad for the small building which will house the health workers out there. That's it, any questions for me?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to just mention again, the benefits and honor to receiving the, the award of Banner City can't be overstated, and you see that when you attend the state level MML meetings, where they do make a big deal of this, and very few towns receive this, and it's a big honor.
That's correct.
So we will recognize that the upcoming statewide MML meeting.
So the highway user fee, Steve's a, is a constant discussion at the MML level. I know it has been for the last couple of, well, since be, you know, the funding was reduced by 90% every year that was, was it '09 or?
Probably going back to 2009, 2010.
Something like that.
Yeah, the highway user fee was reduced as all, as well as police aid was reduced. We had received up to close to 200 and...
20,000.
Yeah, $220,000 per year to assist with our road repaving projects. Now, I believe this last year, which they don't really, it's, it's a grant, and I think we're at 40...
44.
Yeah, 44,000, so you can see the hit we took.
Right.
We're trying innovative ways, we've done that in several locations throughout the town. And, and we don't want to get behind on our street repaving projects, and we've been, we've been staying ahead of the, ahead of the curve, but we want to look ahead, you know, we want to look four or five years down the road, so we want to prepare ourselves for that, so.
Right, so, the, the, the folks don't, what is it, traditionally we'd receive about that amount, and it comes as a function of the number of miles of roads that you have, and then it's funded from the gas tax. Governor O'Malley was governor, in order to, you know, make ends meet at the state level, stripped it from the local governments, and we've been kind of trying to claw our way back ever since. So it's not something that's unique to us, it's something that, you know, is, local governments all across the state are, are fighting. So there's, there's an MML meeting this coming Monday.
Correct.
I know when I was at the, the mayor's event this spring, it was something that was brought up extensively, extensively as well, so. So we'll see what we can do, and we'll report back. Any other questions before we get into the action items? So, two action items, Steve, with drain repair bids, and then the, the new one was the submersible pump.
Correct. The storm drain repair bids, we had a bid on the street for repairs of 16 inlets, you see them listed there. We received one bid back from Stan Balls Incorporated, located in Union Bridge, their bid come in at $28,913. Stan Balls Incorporated's done work in the past for the town, we were pleased with their work. I can't answer the question, bid packets were put out on the street to several other firms, and they opted not to respond, so.
The staff recommends going with the Stan Ball bids, Steve?
Correct, correct.
I'll make a motion that we accept Stan Ball, Stan Balls Incorporated's bid of $28,913 for the storm drain inlet rehabilitation project?
I'll second, I'll second it.
Motion, second, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, the 40 horsepower submersible pump for the spray field.
Correct, this is a replacement pump for our spray irrigation facility, 40 horsepower. We received two bids, one from Fluid Solutions Incorporated for $13,513. The other firm was Site Specific Designs, same pump, bid price was $14,585. Staff recommends going with Fluid Solutions Incorporated.
So do, do we know, I mean, this is the 2016 budget line, Adam?
Uh, 2015.
15?
Current budget, right.
Okay, so then we would have estimated this 14 months ago, 15 months ago?
That's correct, that's correct, yes.
So, any other explanation why we, you know, why the two bids that we got came in a little bit, I would say more over than we usually estimate on budget?
Actually, yeah, it was the time period, as you said, mayor, it was 14, 16 months period, and actually, the price actually went up in the last several months, I can't explain the laws, yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we, we received a bid for the 40 horsepower submersible pump from Fluid Solutions for $13,513.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, on the town administrator side?
The resolution for the floodplain, floodplain management will be coming up later, that's on the agenda.
Is that a resolution or an ordinance?
Actually, it's both. We can't understand why FEMA wants it done that way. Actually, our attorney reviewed it for ourselves and two other towns, and usually it's a housekeeping item, and we, we change the ordinance and we move on, but they, they requested a resolution and ordinance, so we're following, following county's recommendation on that. Okay, Chief Hess couldn't be with us tonight, I'll go ahead and give his report. Chief Hess and I attended the awards ceremony that Officer Garner was honored at, and, and I was very proud that my officers were honored across the board from Maryland State Police, Carroll County Sheriff's Office, and municipalities. And one special award was given out to Phil and Cindy Mulligan for all the work that they've done with Catherine's call. It was a very nice evening, you know, I enjoyed that. Officer Garner, he's a fantastic officer, he's sitting back there, I'd like to embarrass him, so, but, job well done, Ron, good job. Okay, good evening, mayor and council members. Manchester Police Department responded to 76 calls for service in the month of May. Investigations resulted in seven persons being criminally charged. We had two Part I crimes involving theft, both are cleared with arrest, and most of the property was recovered from the coin shop. We also had four assault cases, all cleared with arrest and/or criminal charges. The recap is as follows, and you can see down the line as far as the seven criminal charges on that. Traffic hotspots and enforcements, 96 traffic enforcement stops were all complaint driven, 30 state citations were issued, and 66 warnings. Traffic enforcement focus area was on Halle, Mindy, Sherrill, and Main Street. Under notes, crime talk, same time period last year, we had 14 reported Part I crimes versus five this year. All of the five have been cleared with persons being criminally charged. Our second heroin dealer identified as a supplier for our area was arrested by Baltimore County Police Department. The Carroll County Drug Task Force has been extremely active as well, serving several search warrants and making arrests here in our county. Our partnerships are growing stronger. John Hess, Jr., Chief of Police, Town of Manchester. I don't get as animated as he does, but...
So just to add on to that, we, we had some complaints come in, and some folks contacted me about the Bachman-Holland area, so I know in the last couple of days, you probably have been, those of you that traveled area, we've been doing some increased patrols in that area, and we've gotten positive feedback already, so keep up the good work in that area, as that is another one of our hotspots in town. Anything else, any questions for the police report? Welcome back, and we introduce Commissioner Steve Lance. As promised, he's coming back and making a regular visit to us, always great to see your face.
If you want me up here, I'll take it, man.
If you don't mind.
Okay.
You might be allowed not to.
So the thousands of viewers can, can see me?
Yeah.
First of all, thank you again, I told all of you that I'd be back pretty much on a quarterly basis. This one I thought was pretty important because we just passed the budget, so if there's any questions, you can ask me, and I'll get an answer for you in about a month. No, I'll try to answer those. I'd like to welcome the newcomers to, or newcomer, right? To the board?
Yes.
Congratulations, and certainly the county looks forward to working with you on, in anything that we can do. So, there was some question here about, and I saw some, the, the mayor looked at me when we were talking about the, the floodplain stuff, and also in reference to the, what was the other thing you were bringing up, Steve?
The stormwater management?
Yeah, that, the highway user tax.
Highway users, Steve.
There you go, I got all kinds of stuff on my mind.
Right, right.
I just want to inform you that we also made a move in our structure, we now have a legislative liaison who's going to be working for us in Annapolis, and we did that without any budget moves. So Phil Hager, who was our comprehensive planning guy, and still will be, the director of comprehensive planning, is going to take on that additional role. We feel like that's very important to us because there seems to be a little bit of degree of separation in the things that we're trying to do and our legislators. Now that's in no way a slap to any of them, it's just that we're all very busy, and we didn't have the time to be down there like we should be. And one of the reasons that I thought that was important, when I first came into office, I talked, and I know several folks from neighboring jurisdictions, counties, and they were telling me how they had folks sitting there in a chair outside the chamber doors, and we don't have that. So we felt it was important to get somebody down there. He will be able to help with situations like you all are, are, are doing here with, with getting more information back and getting feedback. So I encourage you, when the time comes, we're sort of on a hiatus now with the Annapolis folks, but when the time comes, we do have a person in place now, who will be down there at least three days a week during session, and I think that's going to be instrumental for both us and our municipalities, so I want you all to know that. Budget time, we did pass a budget without raising taxes, thank you very much, thanks for the applause. The, we however did not decrease the taxes, we maintained the taxes, and that was something that I fought hard for because coming out of the recession and we're still, that's still affecting us, and I thought it was, it was critically important to maintain, and that's what we're going to do. So with that being said, we did a lot of things, and I just want to highlight a couple of them so that you are aware. We put a million dollars into NOT in Carroll, which is our combative program for the continuing drug issue that we've got not only here in Carroll but across the state. I always like to say that because people will think, well, gosh, you know, what's going on in Carroll County? But it's everywhere. I was at the University of Shock Trauma Board Meeting this morning, and every county is talking about the problems that they're having. So it, it's a huge issue. So with that being said, that's going to give five additional offers, officers to the sheriff's department, who are going to strictly work on drug enforcement, period. That doesn't give them officers to be running radar, they're going to specifically work on drugs. The state's attorney will also, as part of that money, get a prosecutor just for drugs, and an educator, because we've also identified that the education is a huge part of that. He's going to try to get these folks as they come into the system, so that we can keep them out of the system the next time. So we think that's very important. We're also going to have a drug summit coming up in the fall, I don't have a date on that yet, we're going to get all the municipalities involved in that, Board of Education, all of our colleges, et cetera, to all sit around the table and make sure that we're going in one direction here in Carroll. We don't want any duplication of effort, especially with the money situation the way it is. So we, we put money towards that. We put an additional six and a half, seven million dollars into education, which we thought was critically important also. We're, we're losing ground with our teacher salaries, and we are also losing ground with some capital improvements. So we think that'll go a long way in helping our education here in Carroll, which is, in my mind, second to none. I had the opportunity to attend Manchester Valley, I, I attended about four of them, but one of them was Manchester Valley's graduation, an impressive bunch of young people that are hitting our streets in various capacities, so, and of course, this young man who was private schooled, I also offer him congratulations, and wish you much luck in your career. So we've got some good things going on in education here, and we wanted to make sure that that continues. We added an additional $400,000 to our Volunteer Emergency Services Association, that is to help with their self-contained breathing apparatus, and for those of you not familiar with that, that's to the firefighters what the weapons are to our sheriff and law enforcement folks. Critically important, they've got to have them on their backs, so that goes to that, and we've also put a little money, extra money in to help with EMS and making sure that our stations have paramedics and EMTs on duty 24/7. Sheriff's going to get another K-9 plus a vehicle, that'll give us 24/7 coverage in Carroll with the, in conjunction with our municipalities. So we'll never be without a K-9 on duty, which is, which is a good thing. And a couple other miscellaneous things, but that pretty much is the highlight on that. Let's see, I want to point out that I took a tour of the Public Safety Training Center. For those of you who have not been there yet, it is a very, very impressive building. It's at Kate Wagner Road where the old 911 bunker used to be, we saved a ton of money by using the bunker and building up. So for $7 million in this county, we have a brand-new vehicle storage facility which gets our command posts out of the weather, and also several of the attack vehicles that our sheriff and Maryland State Police use. That building also has tactical training areas in it. It's an amazing building, so guys are going to be able to climb over... It's an amazing building, so guys are going to be able to climb over walls and simulate shooting situations. So it's not only a garage, it's a training facility also. The classroom facility is second to none, it's going to be incredible. We think that's going to be huge to recruitment and retention for our volunteer firefighters in Carroll. Which I've again got to point out and I want to make sure you all know, we've got to support these folks. If we went to a paid system in Carroll, initially we're looking at about seventy million dollars. Not sure where we'd come up with that. So we've got to support our volunteers. So we look at this new training center as huge in recruitment and retention. Ribbon cutting on that I think is Sunday, July the nineteenth. So we would certainly encourage, I know it's vacation time and everything else, but we're putting the date out there now so everyone can save the date. Again, not only is it going to be used by our fire service, the sheriff's going to use it, all of our law enforcement's going to use it. Our county roads guys will be taking continuing education classes in there. It's amazing, it also comes with a seventy-five-seat auditorium. That's a tiered auditorium that has the latest and greatest bells and whistles. So we are incredibly excited about that. I think that's it. One thing, the last time I was here was talking about gravel roads. I know you guys are struggling with what to do with them. I mentioned a DuraBlend product that we were looking at before in the county. We've pretty much threw that out the window. We've now gone to a tar and chip, the old days of tar and chip. But, and this you might be interested in, Steve, they've improved the technology incredibly. The tar goes down, then the stones go down, then a machine comes back and picks up the excess stones. So there are, the old tar and chip that, those of us that are over thirty, it's not like that anymore. It's really enhanced with new technology. So we're doing that on several roads. In this specific area, we're getting ready to do Mount Ventus one and two.
That's good.
They will both be done. And then we're going to do Crider Schoolhouse, that's also on our list. They're being paved as is, the county's not spending money on getting easements. So we're keeping a little bit of the rural character, if you will, of our gravel roads or our unpaved roads, whatever you like to call them, because a lot of our unpaves don't have any gravel left on them. But that's what we're trying to do. And that's specifically an area that I worked on when I went into office to try to do something with improvements with them. So we're hoping that that works and we're being told that a tar and chip product will stay down for about four to five years and take the heat and also take the beating during the snow removal. So we're very hopeful with that. So you'll be seeing that in this area, on those areas soon.
That's good information, yeah.
So I encourage you if you want, and I know it's not, you know, blacktop, but if we're financially strapped here, tar and chip is not what it used to be.
Right, and we have to look at innovative ideas.
Yeah, yeah, so. I think that's it from the county. When the carnival comes up, y'all got to really support our firefighters. New Windsor lost three nights two weeks ago with weather. I was at Tawny Town last night for a half an hour and got a cheeseburger down and the rains came. So we built the ark and got out of there. So they're losing, our firefighters are losing nights because of weather. So got to make sure we support them when our carnivals come up, so. Questions, comments, concerns from my standpoint, from the county? Again, I'm proud to be your elected official, so I've told you all before, if there's an issue and Steve knows this and so does Chief Hess, oh by the way, let me say this too. Chief Hess had said something to be about health insurance, are you all?
Yes, I was going to bring that up if the council and mayor didn't have anything for you.
Okay.
Commissioner, several, I guess, several groups ago, some of the municipalities approached the commissioners to see if the municipal employees could join and link onto the county's health insurance plans. Not only Manchester, but all the municipalities struggle every year with health insurance costs. And at that particular time, we were kind of shied away. If you have a contact person that I can contact, let me know through Human Resources and maybe we can, you know, get the ball rolling again for next year.
Done.
See where we're at.
Kim Frock.
Yeah, that's excellent, okay.
Our HR Director. I did get some information from you, the city of Westminster is self-insured now through Legit.
That's correct.
And there's a pool of municipalities that are doing that to save money.
Correct.
So I would encourage you to contact her to get the information on what Westminster did.
Right.
She's got it and I think it might save our municipalities a pretty decent chunk of change when it comes to the health insurance issue. So make sure you, I reached out to her and she, you know, that's basically all that I got. We're sort of, we're really not looking to put our municipalities under the county umbrella that would create a lot of issues, including the fact that we'd have to see all your W-2s and all of that and we're not really looking to do that. But I know there's a municipality pool through Legit that I think will really help you folks and all of our municipalities out. So I encourage you to give her a call and she knows your call's coming.
Very good.
So.
I just have a couple small things, I definitely keep some form of like, the drug summit coming up with the, um, this.
Yeah, we will, I think we're up to nineteen overdose deaths in the county. And it's just June, nineteen. We had another one in Sykesville Thursday or Friday night, I think, so. And that was a thirty-six-year-old.
Seems a lot of more middle-aged people now, it's not as many young kids.
Yeah, and you know, it's, and again, I hesitate and of course, Councilwoman Pacelli will tell you this. You know, we don't like to dwell on this, especially in the law enforcement community because then it's perceived that we're just out of control up here, but we're not. It's what's going on everywhere. And again, you know, today was in Baltimore and it's just, it's completely out of control everywhere. So we're trying to get a handle on it. But I will certainly share that with you because we're going to get all of our municipalities involved and get every, going to be quite a big table, but I want to get everybody around the table. So we're working on that now.
Second, we'll leave my next question, this is absolutely my question. So with respect to the NOT in Carroll and the five officers and one prosecutor, any guidance or direction that comes along with that million dollars funding those pieces? On whether it's going to be a tolerant, and I know we're not, I'm not going to jack on quick, is it some direction that comes along with that towards, here's the most dangerous piece or here's where the priorities are right now? And then the follow-up to that, we want to have a, you know, the real activities building, is the enforcement side and then the, the treatment prevention side.
Right.
What's on the rise and, and those.
Okay. The one position that Brian is adding to Leonardo is just strictly an education position. And I touched on that briefly. But when folks are entered into our system, and the system being the detention center, unfortunately, that's their system. We're going to try to yank them out of there in the initial stages to try to get them educated on what they shouldn't be doing in order to get back in there again. He's going to put just a person on that to try to help with that. Because as he said, and Judge Galloway will tell you this, once you're to drug court and we've got a good drug court system here in the county, you're done, it's too late. You may be able to bounce off of that drug court and come out and be somewhat of a viable citizen here in Carroll, but if you're entering into our drug court system, you've got a serious problem. So we're going to try to get those folks before they get to that point. So that educator position will be there. As far as specifics on where the five officers will be, still working on that. And I know as you probably already know, because I would think you've already seen that, our new sheriff is working closely with our municipalities to identify some of those areas. So they're going to really be concentrated on concentrating on those areas. So as they come on board, and remember, this is the FY sixteen budget, so we're not looking until after July anyway. Then it takes time to train, although I think he's got a couple that he's going to throw right into that position out of the gate and then hire some new folks to take the patrol officer, whatever he gets them from. But eventually he'll be up to five. And then they'll have more direction, but they're going to work in that, work on that in specific areas as we move along. So we're excited about that and I think we're going to, you know, we've all, and of course, folks in law enforcement will tell you this too, we can't arrest our way out of this. So I don't want folks to get the idea that, you know, we got five people out there and we're just going to arrest them. You know, arrest, arrest, we can't do that, which is why Brian got involved and now has a prosecutor and an educator also in the plan. So we're trying to come at it as best we can, which is one of the reasons why I'm putting the seminar together too. The health departments of the world, you know, they're supplying Narcan now to folks other than the sheriff's department and our ambulances. So that's saving lives. So, you know, folks aren't aware of that. There are things like that that we're going to get out there too. So it's a huge effort and, you know, we're getting there slowly but surely, so.
So one more thing for you. Steve and I, based on the National Department of History advisory council. So something that's becoming a pretty constant conversation over there is about redistricting. So, and you don't have to comment some of it, but.
That's the Board of Ed, Mayor, thanks very much.
So I think it's, it's something that definitely interests people in this community and at that high school. Some high schools in any major of the issues, but, you know, they're much closer to capacity than just down at high schools. Just in being so far underway and staff, it's putting programs such as the I Program and the French Program is going to apply this year and they're having problems getting coaches and for activities. The redistricting and finding a way to, probably some pockets in the county play a part other than others. But, you know, I did mention that I would sell in the rectory, but as far as this community is concerned, I think it's something that is positive for this community, for the high schools community. To open that conversation up and start with alternatives that would move more of the existing students in the interest of our, of some of those.
Okay, I can tell you, and of course, if, the only way you wouldn't know that this is going on is if you're under a rock, but we've got an issue in my district with Charles Carroll Elementary School. So we're talking about, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty, sixty, seventy kids up there right now in a building that's, you know, at best, fair. As a result of that, the Board of Education has a redistricting committee that they've put together. The report though, I don't think is due back until September. So you'll see more about that now, but I know they're looking at all areas of the county. And as the feeder systems go, if something does happen, and I'm not saying that it's going to, but if it does in the Charles Carroll area, the deep run getting Barnhart area, a lot of those kids would start into the feeder system beginning at Ebbe, which would lead me to believe that they would continue in that feeder system. Now I can't speak for the board, but I would, I would think that that's the way that that would happen. So that might be something that you're, something that is what you're looking at maybe. So again, I don't know what their intent is. And as you know, and anybody who's been through redistricting, it's, you know, the public outcry is, you know, is unbelievable because, you know, not my kid, you know, not going to take them over here because I don't want, so it's tough. It's a really tough thing to do. They haven't done it in a while. The last time they did it, they said it was just a miserable thing to go through because there was so much outcry. So, but once it's done.
It's ripping the bandaid.
Yeah, it's essentially, and I don't want to go on record as, you know, either.
It was easier for me to do that.
Exactly, yeah, which is why I said, thanks very much, Mayor, I'll see you. But.
I won't put you on the spot.
No, but I know that they're working on it. It will see where they come back or what they come back with. I think, and don't hold me to this, but I'm pretty sure they said September to give us a report on what their proposed plan is. I would suspect that they also know what you're saying, that we've got several of our high schools that are down in capacity. Surprisingly, our middle schools are over capacity. So perhaps that's a sign as how things are going to beef up in our high schools a little bit at some point too. We're busting at the seams in Carroll in our, in our middle schools.
We have kind of a crazy system in Carroll that is not uniform across the state. Where you don't have that, you just have to, these three elementary schools go to these, go to West Middle School and these two middle schools go to this high school, so there's kids in North Carolina that are going to both high schools.
Yeah.
And the West Middle are going to three high schools.
Right.
I think that's how we want to, overcrow the middle schools, not the, the large high schools.
Yeah, hopefully they're, and I know they're looking at the county, the whole county. And I know they're looking at each age level too. So I would assume that we'll see all of that. And it's, you know, as you, it's a trickle-down thing, I mean, you know, or trickle-up in this case. So, you know, so. Other than that, again.
Commissioner, if people wanted to understand what the Board of Education plans to do specifically with the seven million dollars in funding, is there somewhere they can go, somewhere online?
You have to check with board on that. And I've, this is a conversation I've had with a lot of folks. We provide them with funding. We didn't provide them with the funding that they requested, but we got them close. The specifics on what they use with that money is best asked to them.
Okay.
And I would assume since it's July the first that they'll have the breakdown. I think they have a board meeting tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock. So beginning, I would think tomorrow, because this is June already, I don't know where the time is going, seems like we were just talking about the snow. But I would think that it's probably on their website too.
Okay, thank you.
So. Okay. Thank you all for what you do too, and if you need me, call me. Or if you need any of us. Steve's got my number, I answer sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have some funds to encumber with, this week of fifteen sixteen. Charlie, you want to give a quick highlight on what that is?
Sure. Um, as you know, in the general fund, we already knew when we were doing the budget that there would be leftover salaries in the police department. So we actually incorporated that into FY fifteen. As Steve talked about, we're going to pay us, we're going to be a hundred and six thousand, we spend fifty. So we might think we're going to have a hundred and six for this year, combined, I think it's one twenty-five, one twenty-four for FY sixteen, so that we can use that to do our bidding. Zoning supplies, there's three thousand dollars left. And the wash bay is one here for all the funds because although we are in the process of doing it, I don't know when that will be ready to go. So I just have that in here to carry it for next year. That's right.
So procedurally, do we encumber the list that submitted as well?
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions about this, these funds that are, what they're from fifteen, or where they're from sixteen? We've got, we have a motion to encumber the list of the funds that's submitted by the finance director.
I'm making a motion that we encumber the funds provided by Director Finance from fiscal year fifteen rolling into fiscal year sixteen. The statement specifically just submitted.
I'll second that motion. Motion's seconded and in discussion. As opposed to, I.
Aye.
Close. All right, so now we get to the updating of the book plan for the resolution introduction of an ordinance. So the resolution I think we could do tonight, correct? The ordinance will reduce, uh, I have the time, let's put out a note, next month, July. So I'll read the resolution, the resolution, uh, zero-two-two thousand fifteen. Agreement between the county commissioners of Carroll County and the mayor and council of Town of Manchester to enforce Manchester's book plan of arrangements. Whereas the provisions of section forty-four CFR part sixty-three of the National Food Insurance Program requires specific communities to adopt the appropriate program management regulations. And whereas Town of Manchester do adopt the maintenance requirements, the section for National Food Insurance Program requests that enforcement said ordinance be administered by Carroll County. Whereas the county commissioners of Carroll County do administer enforcement visits of the ordinance.
will administer enforcement for the ordinance within the corporate units of Town of Manchester. Now, therefore, be resolved by the council of Town of Manchester. The town's duly adopted the Carroll County's land and ordinance consistent with the National Police Insurance Program, enforcement of which shall be conducted by Carroll County officials within the corporate units of Town of Manchester. Do we have any questions on this? This is something we've done a couple of times. Remember, we have a motion to approve resolution zero-two, two thousand fifteen for Manchester's court line of ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number zero-two dash two-zero-one-five.
I second the motion.
Motion seconded in a discussion. I'll say aye.
Aye.
And then, ordinance two-twenty-one, essentially the same. Order, replace, introduce tonight, get this on the website, and it'll be out for four July. Okay, Lord, anybody sign up for this, Keith?
What?
Nope. I'll put it back on.
Oh.
First person. I'm Stuart. Yes, good evening. Water quality report. As you know, under ten thousand people here in town are required by the state to print it up and send it to everybody, except that Hampstead just got a waiver for doing it. So, they're saving twenty-five hundred dollars by not doing it, by having it linked to the website and having it in-town hard copy. I would respectfully ask that we ask for such a waiver, too, because nobody looks at the water quality report, and the ones that do can't make heads or tails. It's like looking at a mutual fund, you know, report at the end of the year required by SEC. It's gobbledegook. I mean, if you wanna see it, it would be available on the website. I mean, we've done the same with Oak Notes, and more people cared about that. I mean, this is just a question to ask the state.
We've done that. We did it for the last three years. We conceived a waiver. We've been doing that.
But I got it in the mail last time. Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm hungry.
Do we have a waiver? I was just curious today.
We've had a waiver for three or four years.
Just wanna make sure we have a waiver, because I.
Same thing. We were looking at saving the money.
What's the printing cost in the mail-out?
Uh, the mail-out with the Oak Notes, I think it costs us over a thousand dollars.
Yeah, but for the water report?
Well, we inserted it with the Oak Notes, so I don't know what the separate cost would be.
But we're not mailing it? We've gotten a waiver? We have a waiver from the state?
Yes, correct.
Okay, just wanna, any other thing?
They actually called me, and, you know, they said, yeah, you know, this is who you gotta talk to, and so on, so.
Yeah, 'cause I just heard that the other day from Hampstead, and I was wondering if we did it too, because like I said, when it comes in, it's not like I look at it hard, so.
That's right.
Okay, okay. Number two, and I know this is not really, you know, the town's responsibility and the purview, Memorial Day, I know we don't have a VFW like Westminster, like four-sixty-seven. We don't have a legion like two-hundred. You know, I've lived in Carroll County twenty years before. When I lived in Westminster, I went, I didn't go to the parade, but I did go in the afternoon to the ceremony that the VFW put on. Hampstead does it at nine o'clock in the morning. I mean, we have a memorial out there, but we don't do anything Memorial Day. Now, I heard Eagle Scout, a great project for an Eagle Scout. We don't have VFW, we don't have a legion, but an Eagle Scout, I mean, Stenzling's nice, but you could do an Eagle Scout project, or sponsored by the Boy Scouts, on organizing an event. Also, Manchester Valley High School, you get, the kids need to do, they still need to do so many hours of community service. They get community service for organizing a simple event. And the event could be simple, fifteen minutes, in the morning, colors represented, pledge of allegiance, maybe a speaker, somebody serving active. Usually, a town representative from government speaks, fifteen minutes tops. We honor our fallen Manchester heroes, and we're on about our day. Hampstead started small, but this Memorial Day, I counted about a hundred-and-twenty, twenty-five people. Years ago, a few years ago, it wasn't that many. But, I mean, before, like I said, I know it's not exactly the town's province or responsibility, but I was wondering if, you know, we could get the ball rolling so that I wouldn't have to drive to Hampstead next year to honor our fallen dead here in Manchester. Thank you for your consideration.
Didn't you, didn't have you to smoke at ceremonies before?
Do you wanna handle that one?
We've had ceremonies before.
We have.
We do have them.
Right, but I didn't have, there wasn't one this year.
Well, you guys seem concerned about Hampstead, so just go to Hampstead and watch them there.
So, we do one every other year when we.
You think it's funny?
Hold on. We.
You're a piece of work.
We, hold on, let's maintain order. So, we have a presentation every other year. When we put new names on the war memorial. So, we have speakers and invite people and veterans active. So, we had one last year, and we'll have one next year.
I appreciate that. I was just wondering if it was something we could do, like give two minutes in there.
Okay. So, we also, if you're volunteering, we also recently lost our person that organizes it to a car accident.
But, like I'm saying, I know we don't have a VFW or a, you know, fifteen minutes, fifteen consideration. Point of time to now and next year.
Sparkle, keep sparking.
Okay, I'm Harold Switzer, thirty-fourty-two Westminster Street. My concern is existing sidewalks. Now, Main Street is great as far as the sidewalks. Westminster, the old part of Westminster Street, there are several sidewalks and driveways that's so bad that when I come into town walking, I walk out in the road. So, I don't stumble over blocks of concrete or stones from driveways. I'm not gonna mention any names or addresses, but I would like to meet with somebody that would take charge of this and go with them and show them my concerns. Also, one of our neighbors is starting a junk pile, and we've had that problem once before. We've had snakes from it. And that needs to be looked into also. Let's say, I enjoy living in Manchester, and I've been trying to help the neighbors float their sidewalks, but I can't do it now because the sidewalks are such bad shape. And I really think this needs to be addressed. So, be glad to meet with someone over.
So, sir, I'm sorry if I missed perhaps your name, of course.
Mr. Switzer, to answer, I'm gonna, to answer your question, the junk pile issue has been addressed. We just have to follow up on that. I know he's been notified. I actually spoke to him, and he's in the process of getting cleaned up. Are you talking about all the aluminum and scrap metal and so on? Okay, same address.
I noticed the pile is a little bit, little bit large. Heard you about that.
Yes, very good, okay. As far as sidewalks, I can gladly meet you out at your house sometime, unless the mayor and one of the council members wants to do that, and we can take a walk and, you know.
Some of the driveways are covered, too.
Right, okay.
With the big stones.
I know we contacted a few of the homeowners around the area, and some of them are actually starting to redo their sidewalks, especially, there's a few on your street. There's a few that just volunteered to redo their sidewalks on Locust Street. So, you know, we just have to get the word out, find out that these folks.
Thank you.
Very good.
Anybody else? So, I know committee reports may be a little bit jumbled up, and we'll have, you know, better feeling of where we're going going forward from tonight. We'll be on the line if anybody has anything to present or to bring up.
My June meeting is rescheduled for July. We're gonna franchise, so.
You've had an hour and a half to work on.
Nothing. I've had, yes, an hour and a half. I have not gotten to it yet. Now you apologize. I'll get on that.
I have nothing to report.
Yes, there's a bocce tournament on June the twentieth. They still need teams and players, so if you're just, you know, wanna play, but you don't have a team, and you can either call four-one-oh, three-seven-four, six-one-nine-three, or visit charlottesville.com at their website.
Is this over at the Palmer's?
Yes.
You said June twentieth?
June the twentieth. There's two more after that, but the next one is June the twentieth.
Do you have any of the dates of the other ones?
No.
Tuesday, October, I know. I think August and October normally, something like that.
Yeah, like August and October. We're just taking it one at a time.
He'll probably come in and tell us.
He recently had some good press out there for working with the Special Olympics. Councilman Wilder?
I will be attending the Maryland Municipal League meeting on Monday, this coming Monday. It's a joint meeting between Carroll and Frederick, so they're usually pretty informative. And I'll be attending my first planning and zoning meeting on Tuesday.
First one, your new first one?
A new first one.
Okay. Anything else for this board? Next regularly scheduled meeting is July fourteenth. I'll hand motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.